Those who just entered the room, our meeting actually for tonight December 2nd started at 6:00 PM with an executive session pertaining to collective bargaining and contract matters. It is now by the Town Hall clock 7:05 PM and we are now in our open session. I'd like to start that portion of our meeting by inviting everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you and once again welcome. Our first item tonight at 7 o'clock or thereabouts is an update relative to the Sutton Brook cleanup. I believe Mr. McElroy, is that right? Mr. Don McElroy from the Environmental Protection Agency is here with us this evening to, I guess, update us and offer a little presentation on the status of that particular project. Welcome sir. There are microphones there. If you want to sit, you can stand up here, whatever's easy for you.
Whichever you like. I need to, should I be in front of there?
Can that be captioned?
Fine, you're speaking loud enough. Okay, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Don McElroy. I'm the project manager for the Sutton Brook site for the Environmental Protection Agency. And I appreciate getting on the agenda tonight. Thanks for being first too, if you like, if you're special. But I wanted to give an update on the site and specifically talk about progress that occurred this year and look ahead through the winter and into next year for this site. And I apologize already for being behind the board here.
Oh no, that's all right.
So very briefly, for those that may not remember, we started doing the cleanup this year and the remedy that is being implemented has a number of main points. I'll just real briefly summarize. It's capping of the landfill, which is two loaves. So 130 acres, 110 acres. Sutton Brook goes between the two loaves. So capping those to prevent water from going through, waste, contaminants out. A vertical barrier, so subterranean surface impermeable wall between the southern lobe and Sutton Brook itself to prevent groundwater, contaminated groundwater from going directly into the Brook. And to push it towards the, really towards South Street to be intercepted by an extraction well, to be extracted and discharged for treatment. There's a number of areas around the site where there are contaminated soils, so excavate those soils, place them, consolidate them within the landfill to be capped. And then groundwater stream, which I mentioned, and then there's quite a bit of wetlands in around the site. And some of those have already been impacted or will be impacted by the construction. And so to restore or replicate wetlands in a number of areas around the landfill. Very briefly, here's an aerial photo of the site. The 293 would be up to the top right, it's just off the figure. South Street would be on the top left, just off the figure. I didn't bring my pointer. Where am I? Oh, I'm up here, sorry. This is the old rail bed that sort of defines this roughly northern part of the, northern boundary of the site. Northern lobe, 30 acres, southern lobe, 10 acres. The yellow line around the southern lobe is, describes that vertical barrier that forms a barrier to prevent groundwater from getting into Sutton Brook directly, pushing it to the groundwater extraction well that's at the eastern, or the western end of the southern lobe. So who's involved in this? Very briefly, Charter Environmental is the general contractor. GS Intec is the engineer who participated, or actually who performed the design, got the design all together. And they're actually on the site also as the construction quality engineer to ensure that the design, that it gets implemented, to, that the remedy gets implemented according to the specifications. So the right tests get conducted, the record gets built to show that they've achieved what they need to achieve. Then the town of Tewksbury, both the police departments, DPW, the town administrator have all been involved. Toxic, the local community group, has been involved really since before this was a Superfund site. They were involved in reviewing all the design documents, as we're even in the design, and have been involved since then as well. And from regulatory standpoint, Mass Department of Environmental Protection. And then myself as EPA's representative. And ADCom is a contractor for EPA and who provides onsite oversight of the work going on. So I'm out there, representative of ADCom out there as well to work. So what's happened this year, I think everybody remembers, huge concerns about traffic, appropriately so. Very confined area, one way in, one way out. So had a lot of preparation, coordination, communication. So there was a lot of work on, you know, hitting on the trucking companies to stay on route. I mean, normal, safety stuff, you know, no speeding, it's a confined area. But that was hit on many, many times. We worked with the town departments to find places for signs to be put up to try and help keep them on, keep the trucks on track, not getting into other areas. And then also look at undergrowth, at corners for sight lines that potentially need to be removed. Between the contractor and town, gave it a number of places. And then communication wise, we had, I issued a number of updates during, in advance of and during construction, to try and inform the town and the community and neighborhood about activities coming. So, you know, before heavy hauling was starting, before we were, you know, had people on site regularly, so that people would be informed. And the town was nice enough to post these updates on the website. And then three news related organizations in the area also did that, which was very helpful. We also sent them out to our email addresses that we had. And then ongoing, hitting up the truck drivers again and again on the importance of safety in roads. And I think overall, it was, it was pretty successful. Didn't have, at least this year, the kinds of traffic concerns, as I'm aware of, that maybe we all were fearful of. So perhaps so far so good, another year to go. So progress this year, the subsurface barrier was installed during the summer. Most of the contaminated soil excavation has been completed. Based on some sample results, we have to go back to a couple of places and take out a little bit more, but pulling a number out, probably 95% or something like that. On the south lobe, about 50% of the cap is completed, slightly less. And then the grading of the landfill, get it to be the right shape so the slopes will be stable, that's been completed. The groundwater extraction got turned on last week intermittently and then this Monday it's been turned on completely. So water's being extracted or extracted and then discharged to go do all the treatment plan as we speak. And it should be on basically from now on. A couple of wetland replication areas were completed this year on the south side of Sutton Brook. And then, once the work started, air monitoring has occurred at perimeter of the site throughout. And then whenever excavations were occurring, we're also doing monitoring at the edges of the excavation. And we did not see any exceedances of levels that were required us to stop and do, take different measures to reduce the emissions. So we didn't have any exceedances like that. And the last thing I want to mention was housekeeping wise. Once we started taking deliveries in, a wheel wash station was installed. So that trucks went in, when they're leaving the site, they go through a wheel wash to minimize the amount of traffic out on the South Street. And that wasn't operational until, I think the week before last, as we started getting into freezing temperatures, that got shut down. But they also had employed a street sweeper for that area. And I think the plan is sort of twice a week and as needed, to try and keep up with that and not have it be a nuisance. So that's pretty much the progress for this, this year construction wise. Looking ahead to the winter, there's still some moving parts going. If things work right and weather permits, we'll be looking at doing some limited grading shaping on the northern lobe to get a head start on the capping next year. And then in addition, similarly weather permitting, anchor trench installation. That's sort of, it's where the liner that prevents the water from going through, where it meets the bottom of slope, which gets anchored into the ground simply. So there, but there's a process where that happens. And it's limited intrusiveness and if the weather's okay, they can do some of that during the winter. 2015, capping, 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 capping. So finish off the southern lobe and do the entire northern lobe, which will again entail a lot of material brought in. So again, primarily going to be soils. Some of the capping we showed, but that's a relatively small number of trucks. As before, the vast majority is going to be, you know, sand and soil, some gravelly stuff, but there'll be a lot of trucks. So again, we'll be into that situation. It does not look like we'll be able to complete everything next in the 2015 season. We expect all capping to be completed, so the traffic component ought to be done in 2015. At least as we've all been fearing, that that piece of traffic will, should be done in 2015. And I anticipate and plan to do the same kinds of updates that we did this year. Modify them, you know, if we get feedback that suggests that there's a different way that would work better, certainly opens that. But again, try and get out in advance notice, so that there aren't surprises at least, and do what we can. And that's pretty much what I wanted to go through. 2016, I'm sorry, I expect that to have the additional wetland replication work and fencing the site and then whatever punch list items are left. But I think it's sort of finish off the pieces in 2016. And I just put my contact info up there, but again, the town has a, has put site info on the website. And so my information would appear on there for if anyone's looking to get ahold of me. And Sarah White's name is up there as well, the community relations person, and Peter Robinson. So that's pretty much what I'm going to go through. I appreciate the time and I'd be happy to answer any new questions that anybody has.
Before I turn it over to my colleagues, have you had any concerns relative to any of the butters or neighbors, particularly on South Street? Anything that's come to your attention that's noteworthy?
In terms of issues with the work going on?
Yeah, the work going on.
No, not really. We had a couple of questions saying, hey, is this going on, or is that going on? Neighbor on further south thought there was a bunch of litter cutting going on, which is where one of the wetland replications was going on. In fact, I ended up talking to them a number of times because they were the closest to work going on. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure they weren't having a party if somebody said that work was going to happen or anything. But, so there was a couple of calls we got in terms of questions, but not really. Didn't, didn't, yeah, so surprisingly, yeah. Because it was very active, there was times, they went, they went six days a week for most of the summer, or seven days a week when that wall was going in, with that special subcontractor.
In terms of the number of trucks coming in and out, I forget. When we first looked at this, we were, you know, talking nine or 10,000 trucks in the entire project. But can you estimate roughly what percentage we've completed and what's left to do in terms of that kind of traffic?
You know, I didn't do that metric. I'm going to pull a number out of the air and say we're a third of the way there. Might be slightly less than that, like, that's probably close to ballpark. We had, in the, when we had a meeting last, the summer of 2013 regarding truck routes and then talking about traffic a lot there. The estimates that we're being worked on was up to 100 trucks in a day. So truck in, truck out would be 200 if I'm counting things. And we were approaching that number a bunch of the days. We also had a little bit, we got started late for a variety of reasons. And so the, we probably lost a month or so of production time. You never know, however, every year's going to be different because of the weather. But this year we probably lost anywhere around a month of time. So, but I would, I would say that, you know, on a number of days, we probably were at 90 plus trucks, something like that. And, you know, I never want to make predictions for the future, but so far at least, we didn't see the parade that I think we all feared. At least I didn't in the time zone, I didn't hear reports of that. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of, again, next year is capping, capping, capping. And, you know, anecdotally, I'd just say that everybody is, you know, management wise and contractor wise is embracing that traffic is an issue. And leaning hard on the vendors, meaning for control of deliveries that, you know, you work it right or else you won't be on the site. So they've been sending that message.
Well, we appreciate that. It means a lot to residents in that area for sure.
It's a big issue. There's no, there's a reason for the concern.
Just last question from me. I know we're one of the parties who pays the bill, so how are we on the budget? Anyone tracking?
I'm not, that's not something I'm privy to. I don't, I don't get the parties that are paying the bills. I don't, I don't see those financials.
Is that right? Okay, thank you. That's not a bad spot to be in.
I have my own, I have my own issues.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just, I wanted to share feedback with you. I live on Jenny's Way. I agree with everything you said. You know, I travel South Street regularly. I pass the trucks. They, most often are going slower than residents go on that road. I think they've done a really good job. I haven't seen dust or debris or anything. You know, I was at the meeting at Trang Yan and there were a lot of concerned residents. And they raised some good concerns and I think you guys were able to address those things. No dust. I've seen the street sweepers. I've seen the trucks going up and down the road. If it was ever approaching 100 trucks a day, I never noticed. I mean, I drive the road a lot. So it's been better than advertised from my point of view. And I've spoken to some, some of my neighbors to get their feedback and their feedback was the same. So thank you for, you know, hearing the feedback, taking it into consideration and making sure it worked. It's, it's nice when it all goes that smoothly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have heard also the truckers saying, yeah, work on the speed limit and cars come off like.
They're trying to get by, they're trying to go somewhere, I mean, it's.
Don't want to hit the rear end of a dump truck.
David, just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Wilson. When everything's done and capped and completed, the entire project this time, is that area all ready to build for the residential, commercial, industrial? I mean, is there anything else that has to be done or is that it?
That, the landfill itself, will not be residential. It's not, that should never be expected. Also, at least the northern lobe is a big hill with steep sideslopes. So the, a capped landfill unless it's designed for another purpose, is intended to keep water from going through it and also shed water that gets on it. And so sideslopes and stormwater discharge are a significant piece of it. So maintenance to make sure those things still have the right way. And then the cap, being impermeable, you put foundations, footings can be issued that. Now, not to say that there couldn't be any possible development. How many of you familiar with the Schaefer landfill over in Billerica? They just got a big solar facility on it.
Also, it can be used.
That part?
It can be used for some other purpose.
Yeah, it just, you know, it's, I always make the analogy for friends, if you had a big box store and you hadn't planned for a big yard issue, you needed to go on the roof. You'd have to make changes to the roof to put it on there. And that could be similar to the cap. They really actually adjusted their design for the solar stuff, so that the cap didn't need any alterations.
Right, that was my point. Is it, is it usable for some other purpose other than just being?
Could be. Depending on the details, so yes, it is possible. That's one of the limiting things now, is that the development possibilities, some often come after something's already in place. Where the most ideal would be if you were designing it knowing that that was going to be the next step. You might take different steps.
Well, that's a good point also. Maybe there's something people can talk about before the completion of something they may want to go there that would fit. Something that the town would be interested in putting there, as you just mentioned, a solar farm or something in our area.
Right. I think right now, and I don't want to speak for anybody, I'm not writing checks on the thing. So, but in reality, so the design got done a year and a half ago, parties are signed up and committed to pay dollar X. So if it costs dollar X plus something else, that's an issue for the parties to decide, if something like that came up. Now, the reality is also that northern lobe is going to, the construction on that's going to start in, you know, five months. So it's, it's a blink of an eye in some sense. It's a blink of an eye in Superfund, Superfund, if you like, just to make a joke out of yourself.
Did you see any big surprises when you got into starting doing the work that you didn't expect them to know about?
Uh, not, no big surprise. There's always surprises, just like if you tear your house apart, there's stuff there. But scope, scope wise, it's, it's been pretty much what we expected. I mean, there was, you know, moving, dirt digging stuff, you know. So when we're excavating stuff, you know, we're pulling out contaminated soils, we say we think it's this far, we excavate to there, then sample. And if it still is too high, then you have to dig more. So there's been some of that of needing to get more or less, but there weren't, there haven't been any wholesale, geez, we need to change the design, that's the thing.
And I just have one engineering question I was curious about. You put a vertical barrier on the south lobe to stop the groundwater from seeping into Sutton, but I didn't see one on the north lobe. Does it slope away from Sutton, is that why?
No, the groundwater associated with the southern lobe is way, way more contaminated than that coming off the northern lobe. So only the extraction is only the water coming off the southern lobe. Good question. You could say it too.
Bruce?
Yeah, what are the sorts of contaminants that you're dealing with there?
The sorts of contaminants? The whole gamut, so bottles, metals, semi-bottles, everything, pretty much. I mean, it's a landfill that took seemingly, I mean, old landfills typically got everything from your trash and my trash to industrial waste. So plastic solvents, but everything.
Okay, so, because you mentioned air monitoring, and so I wondered how much water monitoring. So as you're disrupting the land site, that can affect the flow of water through there, can affect the water table. And so are you monitoring the Brook and?
Yeah, so there's, it's pretty typical at a Superfund site that over the years, a whole bunch of holes get poked in the ground to get groundwater samples, that's the first part. So we set up a monitoring network that initially was, was really big as we were doing the study work. And then as we got into the design work and had, we've got now 12 years of data, both in terms of contaminants as well as mapping groundwater directions and all. So we've, you know, got, got a monitoring network that's been monitored quarterly and right now semi-annually. It'll go back to quarterly when the construction's finished. That includes water levels, so we can map directions and see if that changes. So, and, and it's both in the most heavily contaminated areas, but then also defining the edge of contamination. So it's not impossible to say, okay, well, this well's clean, it's always been clean, so that's the edge there. And maybe you start getting hits in there, so maybe, maybe you need to go further out to be sure you have the edge. We haven't seen that as of yet, but, you know, it's not, that is one of the things that's been like that.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was my question, especially with now installing a vertical barrier that is impermeable. How does that affect the movement of the plumes under the ground?
So the, the way this groundwater in this site generally, the Brook was the discharge point for the most part, the groundwater. So from the north and from the south went towards the Brook. And so again, the intention of this was to block groundwater from going to book there and get it down to where the extraction well is. And so right now, the extraction well's being kind of fine tuned to get the right balance of drawdown. So that it's sucking in more contaminated stuff, not drawing from the Brook, not drawing from relatively uncontaminated areas. So that's, but big picture, we are looking at those things. That's certainly a concern. There are, like, if you kept going straight towards South Street, you run into Serenity Drive, excuse me, being a circle, if you drew that line straight past the southern lobe. So that's an obvious, you know, big concern that we not seeing impacts there. And we have wells in both those areas.
Yeah, that was my next question, is are those, do those residents have wells and have they been?
I'm sorry, we have monitoring wells.
Oh, you have monitoring wells, okay.
Yes. And I know, I, I think there are some private wells there. I'm forgetting details on that. I know there's a lot of private wells in the whole area, certainly.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, sir, thank you for that update and we absolutely.
If I could, the board may want just a little bit additional information if he has it, if I might.
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea that when it's finally capped, whether or not this property is going to remain with the previous owners? Who's going to take control after it's all?
I think the town owns it now.
You took it?
With problems. So we'll stay with the previous owner.
And with the slope of that large parcel, is it your feeling that it is too steep for solar panels?
Uh, I think our slopes are, I want to say they're 20%, which, I mean, it depends on the footings. I think we had Schaefer, I think that we did have panels, I think that's what we put the limit at, was 20%.
What is it here?
I, I think that's what the design slopes are. And Schaefer has some, some slopes that are steeper than that. But ultimately, the, the solar panels and their footings aren't really a stock item. So you really need to match footings to a slope situation. I mean, it would be a design engineering puzzle to model it for stability and, you know, when issues, things are bad.
And if the town, which now owns it, wishes to solicit, for example, solar panels, how long does your control stay over the site after it's been completed? I understand it's a period of years when you continue to be involved.
A lot of years.
A lot of years.
I think, I don't have a straight black and white answer for you on that. I mean, I think that like, so the consent decree that governed the cleanup talks about 30 years in the context of some obligations. But it's, not in terms, it's not clear to me that they really end then because the landfill will still be there. I think under the state regs, if you have a landfill with waste there, you need to monitor.
For a long time.
Forever at this point. So I'm not sure that obligation ends. So at this point, for argument's sake, the maintenance obligations of the group doing the cleanup exists going forward. Now, that's the case at Schaefer as well, that's going on. So it's not, it doesn't eliminate the ability to do something.
In the case of Schaefer, and also those few other sites, while you continue to monitor, there's no obstacle? And as soon as cooperation done for town seeks to solicit solar panels, that that's not going to happen?
No, I mean, there, I think there's, there are challenges, let's say. But certainly, you know, you know, alternative energy sources is something that EPA is behind in a big way. And so looking certainly to, I mean, you know, my EPA is. a big way, and so looking certainly to, I mean, you know, my, EPA's interest at Sutton Brook, at Schaefer landfill is protectiveness, and that's, that's my main charge. Now, we were able to, I'm the project manager on Morse Park as well, so I was heavily involved in that solar project. And so, my charge also was to try and facilitate that while at the same time ensuring that the remedy remains protected. So, to try and have both things...
Well, Schaefer worked out pretty well.
Yeah, very, very successful. So, and there's, you know, that, the wheel's been invented a couple of times. I think there's more inventions going on because right now, I think every site is at least a little bit or a lot different, so they don't all have exactly the same challenges.
All right, sir. Thank you, and on behalf of the residents, particularly those that live down there, we appreciate your vigilance to the impact on the, you know, surrounding area. It's been, it's a positive storyline to hear this evening, and I know, I think I can say this safely for my colleagues, we often, when things like this are going on, get delved with calls, questions, concerns, people that are negatively impacted, and I don't think we have experienced that at all here relative to this project, so it's a credit to the communication effort and the vigilance in terms of monitoring the vendors that we mentioned, so we appreciate that.
Thanks. I appreciate the feedback.
Anything you need from us, please.